Salt don't work below 20, so.
We'll go ahead and call our call meeting for the work agenda to order. First line of business would be, general business would be Ms. Rita Miller.
Good afternoon. I've got a handout for each of the board members. I wanted to have a little discussion about our late applications and definition of good calls. The last time I approached the board about good calls and having a definition for that was back in 2015. But this year we've had a lot of applications that came in late. And really, we've never discussed or defined what good calls means to our board or our county. We've had a lot of applications that have came in that the property owner didn't know about the deadline or about the program and things like that. And every time we approve one of those, it of course messes up our, not messes up, but makes adjustment to our levy and our budget and things like that. And I just felt like this year we had had a lot of late applications for unknown that they didn't know. And really, it's the property owner's responsibility to know what their rights are in the property. And so I just wanted to either maybe get something in writing for a definition of good cause or just get a better understanding of going forward, what the board wants to consider as good cause. And so in your information, I gave some things that came from other counties. This came up on our assessor's list serve not long ago. And all the counties were talking about what they consider good calls. But there's only three that actually has a written definition of good calls. There's only three counties that do that. And most of the time, it's medical situation, death of the taxpayer, active military deployment. But each of the ones I reviewed expressly said that the taxpayers not having knowledge of the program would not be considered good cause. So I wanted to get a feeling of how the board wanted me to do this going forward. The tax assessor does not have the power to deny a late application. Those must come before the board. But if the board decides that not knowing about the program, that isn't going to be good cause, then that might help keep some from coming onto the board if I'm able to explain that. If you want to continue, you know, as we have been, that's fine too. I just wanted to bring it to your attention that I feel like there have been many more approved this year.
Open it up to the board for discussion a little bit and get a direction as to what the board desires how to handle this. Officer, questions about it? Comments?
Would, curious to know, you say there's three counties. Is that included anywhere in?
It is. Wake County, of course, the deadline to apply is June 1st, and that's per statute. And able to apply through the last day of the calendar year, that's also statutory language. Theirs was physical or mental illness, infirmity or disability that would affect the taxpayer's ability to apply timely. Death of the taxpayer or an immediate family member or active military deployment. And then it goes on to say taxpayer neglect or oversight or lack of awareness will not constitute good cause. And actually, I only have two counties on here, then Scotland County. Reasonable basis for consideration would be the applicant is given incorrect information in writing regarding the matter from a CPA. I haven't heard that before, but the applicant requests would have been timely filed but for the late delivery or failure to deliver by the post office FedEx, things like that. Or verification is provided that the applicant is incompetent or incapacitated or deployed. And then the burden of proof is unqualified for the consideration is on the property owner. I felt like that one might be getting a little more into, more information than what we really need. And so I didn't know if Heather had, do you have any kind of recommendation for us or opinion?
I had looked also just to see if I could find some other counties. So I did find the Wake County one, but also I found Dare County has one. It's a little bit different because they go into a lot more detail about, you know, what they're considering. But their example of good cause is the exact same example that you found in Wake and Scotland. Physical or mental illness, infirmity or disability that would reasonably affect the taxpayer's ability to apply timely. Death of the taxpayer or an immediate family member or active duty military deployment. And they went a little bit further and they said taxpayer neglect, or I think they said that in the other one. Taxpayers neglect or oversight, lack of awareness is not something that would give you an exemption. They went a little bit further and they put in theirs specifically what the elderly or disabled exclusion would be, or disabled veteran exclusion. So they defined that a little bit more, but that's not talking about good cause. So I think all of the counties that we could see, they have the same definition for what they consider good cause other than what was statutorily, you know, dates and stuff that would already be required. So I think that that is probably on par with exactly what I saw. And I don't know how else you're going to define good cause unless you start adding in additional things that you would consider. But I think overall, if that is what the definition seems to be with other counties and what's implied in the article, you know, that was issued by the school of government, that's probably a good definition to stick with. And then anything else that would fall outside of that, there was a question about. Then I think that would be something that you would bring before the board then. And then it could be the board's determination as to whether that was good cause depending on what the circumstances were.
The only, the only thing that I really saw that stood out to me, I like all their definitions. The only one that I had a question about was active duty military deployment. You've got to put in reservist now. And there's a difference between active duty and reservist. Once a reservist is called to active duty, they're still a reservist. But if you refer to active duty, that is the regular troops. So if we put in active duty military personnel on deployment or reservist called to active duty, that would give a clear definition on that. As far as ignorance of the law being no excuse, we've all heard it all our lives. I think that that's, that's what we've got to incorporate. I like all the definitions, put them all in there. It covers just about everything.
Follow up, just, I agree, I think, you know, just because they didn't. Back the next year. But if we're looking at these, some of these causes. What are you going to be? Are you going to need?
You know, what have you historically needed or used for, because I'm sure you've looked at, you know, somebody's illness before. What are you historically using to determine whether there's a physical or mental illness or some kind? Are you getting something from their doctor?
We've just gotten, they've had to do a written letter usually, and all of those have to come before the board. But usually, we've just taken their word for it in a letter. Now, we could get further information, and some people have provided more information than that. But we've never expressly required anything specific.
This board meeting approved an application on a doctor's statement that was in there.
Okay, yeah, let me back up. So if it's a disability application, then yes, there is a form that is required to be filled out by the physician and submitted with that. And that's just part of the application process. So I guess I should have said anything other than what the application requires we haven't requested.
You using, the one that I saw, and this just happened to come across, I don't know if I've ever seen it for our county. This says AV9 form?
That's the state form.
Okay. And that's for disability, elderly or disabled exclusion, disabled veteran exclusion that's listed on here statutorily, so we do have that, so that's good. Otherwise, it would just be, what are we considering good cause for the defined things, you know, being physical or mental illness?
How would, how would we? I'm in turn. Would we not relate? Just in certain information could lead to the documentation.
Was, would be my concern too, how deep in the weeds, you know, do we want to go to require this?
Taking someone's letter is one thing, but actually firing some type of written documentation outside of a declaration, I don't know how we.
Tax records that we have though, don't necessarily go any further. But if you, if you have a tax record for somebody and they write something to you, that's not part of a public record, is it?
Anything that has, any application that has any kind of income information on it is not public record.
So it potentially could be the same if you, you know, like the letters that people would write themselves. That's not something that is available for public view in anybody's tax record. Somebody came to the tax office and said, I need information about that. None of that background information is anything you're providing to the public anyway. I mean, so I'm not saying we need to do more, I'm just saying that it's not public. I don't want the public to worry that if they write something at this point, that it would be disclosed to the public. It will not.
Okay.
Right.
Simple for the veterans, because we get a letter once a year reaffirming what our disability is.
The veterans is a 100% service-related disability, so, and wants that.
But no matter if you're receiving compensation, you get that letter, you're looking for 100%. I've got proof, I get a letter once a year saying that I'm a certain percentage, and I'm sure Bobby does too, but you're only concerned about the 100%, so the veterans will be taken care of.
Hold up, Heather said. Documentation that's being provided, there may not be requesting such, as I understand it. Get into the process of asking. Actually part of our process.
I don't think we'd be in violation if we have a doctor's statement, because he's looking at the records and he has given a judgment. And simple statement that I find at this time that this person was not capable of making an informed decision, we can use that. We're not getting into a diagnosis or anything.
I think it's probably going to depend, if you go beyond what this definition is for good cause, because you think you need more information, that may be a case-by-case basis. But if it's just overall, the definition of what you would consider good cause to help you so that you weren't having to bring all of these additional, you know, another one, here's another exclusion, here's somebody who needs it, it's late, it's after, you know, if there was a guideline which said this is what good cause would be for, I think then it would come up, if we had that as a definition, then the only thing you're bringing in front of the board at that point is going to be, I don't know, what do you want to do about this one, or is this something you want to give an exemption because you're not sure? And that would be helpful so that at meetings where you're having to come in and say, okay, well, here's, there's this one, and this, this one, this one, this one. A little bit easier and it might be able to exclude some from continuously having to come before the board.
I agree, yes.
No, we just simply do an affidavit, do a form, and have them check off the box that they meet one of these, and have them swear by it and sign an affidavit and, you know. Just that if they lie about it, it's between them and the creator. So that leaves us out of legal quagmires with HIPAA and everything else.
Just make that part of a late application process.
Okay. If we had a definition that would help you, then, then yeah, you've got that form, but then they can fit into potentially, this is what the definition is, so that you don't have to come and ask and say, hey, you need to make that determination that now this individual qualifies or not. If you have the definition of what would qualify that individual, then it's going to potentially avoid, they do their affidavit, say, yes, this is my situation, they sign off on that, then you have your definition, then you're alleviating some of that, you know, responsibility for the board to have to continuously make these decisions, because now you would have the ability to say, oh, it fits in, and they've signed their affidavit and it fits this one, then it's been taken care of.
Anything that?
I would, I would agree to that, but there's got to be a caveat that the board may request documentation. Because if all of a sudden, we end up getting these late applications and it's the same doctor signing off on them, yeah.
Basically provides a filter.
Some line's going to stop right here.
Several questions that, what about a person who's under power of attorney and the attorney doesn't realize, whoever has that power of attorney, doesn't realize that they may be eligible for an exemption? And then it comes on, you know, six months or four months later, that this person should not have been under that tax evaluation, or how is that handled?
Let me see, if I'm understanding, an individual has a power of attorney who didn't know to file the application by the deadline, so I would think that would be the same, that would have been that attorney's responsibility to know.
That would be for good cause.
I think it could be, because you're talking about, it's not necessarily an attorney, it's somebody who's a power of attorney.
Power of attorney.
Which could be an individual who has no clue, and they don't know that this is the situation either. So, you know, and when somebody generally is acting under a power of attorney, that's because the other person might be incompetent or unable to handle things for themselves. You're not generally talking about a situation where that person is competent or completely able to handle their own affairs, so you would assume there's some kind of illness and that they might be able to legitimately check off one of the, you know, the causes that could be used, and they sign it because they're the power of attorney and provide that power of attorney to the tax office to be able to prove that they're authorized to sign on behalf of the individual who's the property owner.
And then the other, other part is, how long does this exemption, does it stay forever and ever? Or does it change at the end of each tax year? Or how do you know that their situation has changed if they don't notify you?
So it is an exemption for life, it's not an annual application. So the taxpayer has responsibility to notify the tax office if there's been a change in the situation, but then the tax office is responsible for auditing one eighth of all those applications every year. So sometime during an eight-year period, those applications are audited.
And excuse, I'm not saying excuse, and some of the reasonings that we've had lately as people asking for exemptions, they say, I didn't know. And according to the statutes, I didn't know doesn't qualify as good cause, is that correct?
We haven't really defined good cause, and so that's what I'm asking for, is some, some direction for those late applications where I can say that's not part, that's not considered good cause by our board. Now, they could still go beyond me and come to the board, that every property owner has that right. Yes, appeal to the board, yes.
Basically, you're asking for us to come up or for this group to come up with some type of definition that gives you some, where you can explain to the taxpayer, this is what the rules are, and just because I didn't know, according to this, doesn't qualify.
Right, and then if they want to appeal that further, they would come to the board.
The Scotland County rules they've got set up would work well in Allegheny County.
I think a couple of those may get into the weeds a little bit more as far as something from their CPA. I agree with the, you know, if it was delayed, delayed by the postal service or something like that, which that's something we honor anyway, you know, we honor the postmark. And then I think the affidavit that was discussed would probably take care of that incompetent or incapacitated part. The only thing I really don't agree with is that information from the CPA or tax office or department of revenue being incorrect. I really haven't seen a situation like that come up before, so.
And approve for any qualifying consideration is on the applicant or their agent, you like it?
Yes.
That verbiage?
I'm going to ask questions from the board members.
Your decision from?
I just wanted some guidance, and I thought Heather and I could work on something and then bring it back to the board for approval if that was satisfactory.
What on the?
Bye. Thank you.
Dispatch budget and planning.
I'll lead us into that if that's okay. Before, before you, you see Nick and David and April, Mary and Daniel, Drew and myself, and a whole lot, we've been meeting regularly since, I guess, well before the grant process, talking about dispatch and the relocation and how we get there, and thus far have been successful in, in our attempts. Now, with 2022 being here, we've also dove into the, you know, the more of the weeds, I think we've used that phrase already today, but looking at the cost associated with it, trying to break it down, drill down to some things. That's what the, what the team has been working on. And I will tell you that, asked before the meeting started, because I was not present at the last meeting, so it's my understanding that, that they have elected Daniel Rotten as the spokesperson for, for this presentation, and, and he looks well-equipped and ready to go. So if it's okay, I'm going to turn it over to Daniel at this time.
Is he here, don't he?
In the back, they're going to be on the bus, is what they do. Everybody doing okay today? So, I think some of the discussion we had had was, and some of the questions that were asked of us were twofold or threefold, was one, let's kind of look at what it takes to run dispatch now as it sits, and what's it going to take to run it once we move it? And the third part of that then was, where are we kind of at with what's it actually going to cost to pick it up and bring it down here? So, I sent an email out to our, to our group the other day, and I summarized a lot of the information in there, and so I'm going to skim through that and present that to you guys to a degree. And I'll start with what it takes to actually operate dispatch now. And if we get into the budget from the last, I think I've got the last about four or five years of it, what does it actually take to run dispatch with the four seats that it has now? That cost has been about $250,000 a year. If you take out capital purchases and the 911 monies that we get and all that stuff, the actual cost to actually pay the dispatchers and their salaries and their retirements and pay the light bill and all those things, it's about $250,000 a year. Now, the last budget, I think we also had the additional four seats budgeted, that bumped it up to $375,000. That's what we figure it's going to take to run it sitting down here on an annual basis. That's not, again, that's not including any of the 911 money that we get, that we use to pay for, you know, CAD systems and computers and servers and all that stuff, because we get that money back from the 911 board, as long as it's an approved purchase. So, does anybody have any questions about that, those numbers? I mean, I, it's in the budget, I mean, and you guys all have that, I mean, that's basically where we pulled that from. But if we want to discuss any of those things, I'll be more than happy to before kind of move along.
That includes salaries, benefits, everything, retirement.
Yeah, all the, all the stuff that goes with an employee, yeah.
With the emergency dispatch.
Correct. That's, and that's, the 375 is the number with eight dispatchers, so, yes.
So you're actually doubling.
Thereabouts. Anything else? Okay.
Do you have a question? What about the cost for the simulcast system, the towers?
It's, that's one of the things that we had talked about a little bit, and April, is that in the 911 budget? The actual cost that we paid to mobile communication for the tower rent? Which line does that come out of? I don't remember right off. Is it in the dispatch budget? I've seen it somewhere, I can't remember where it's actually at. Yeah, let the budget lady talk about the budgets.
With the current budget this year, the four additional dispatchers, they were budgeted from September 1 for the rest of the fiscal year, because we knew it would take a few months to get those up and in place, and actually, they're not all in place as of yet, correct, Nick? Okay. So, that's not a full year of full staff in dispatch with those EMD dispatchers, just wanted to point that out.
It's close.
It is very close, yeah.
It's very close to a year, an additional 125,000?
It's 10 months, yeah.
Need to, to worry about a year, so what?
I had, you should have a spreadsheet that I gave to Daniel, that he sent out with that email. Didn't you send out the spreadsheet with email?
I didn't attach it.
Okay. I can get, we have all those salary numbers, I have those, so let me go make a copy of those and just print it right back to you, okay?
Just doing the quick math, if, if 125,000 is 10 months, is that what we said?
Yeah.
Well, then 12 months is 150,000. So, that's what it would take extra, each month is 12,000 some odd dollars.
I didn't send the spreadsheet to the group because it had.
Salary and benefits. That's how much per month?
Let me go.
$1,500. If, if, and I'm using the numbers quoted, if, if 125,000 was for 10 months, that's 12,500 per month, so you add two more months to it, that gives you 150,000.
Starting salary, 28?
It looks like that's about right, yeah.
Let's round it, 29,000, and then 10,000 for medical, that's 39. Social Security is going to be 7.65, let's round it to, let's say 2,500. So now we're looking at 4,100, times four, that's 160,000. Retirement in there. At 10 months, we're, it's going to be pretty close, but I think you're off by 10%.
You know, part of what we were.
I'm, I'm waiting for the magic fingers over here.
I'm taking, I'm taking estimated numbers. So, the first number I took was 125 divided by 10, times 12, and that's the 150.
What I'm trying to look at is what is a one-year, physical year cost for those four extra dispatchers?
That, that budget number that Daniel, I don't know if you've got the sheet, but it has a number on it somewhere.
Trying to look at this and make sure it's all here, so. Need to get April back in here, she knows more about the budget stuff than I do.
Should be your salary, your FICA, you, you know, there's a combination of three or four line items that add it to it.
Right.
If that's a, if that's a 10-month number on the extra four, then there should be 12 months of the originals, and the only difference should be the four that were added to the budget. And Nick, is there, is there two of those in place? Two of the four?
No, one of them.
One of the four. So, the only discrepancy would be three of the additional four that was added to the budget.
Here's in the dispatch page, okay.
Yes, that, that would be the, the final number with insurance benefit.
Insurance benefits and everything for everyone.
Yes.
If we've hired everyone, so we're looking at a half million dollars right there. How much is our simulcast cost in a month? 1,800?
It's 18, in this budget, it was 18,000 for the year.
It was 1,500.
30,000, so that's another 30,000 for the communication system.
We've got 18 in there already.
Is the maintenance? What is the maintenance contract? For the EDOs?
There's a line in here for maintenance of communication equipment. It's 3,230 bucks.
3,200?
3,230. That's what's in the budget, 2022. You'll have to bear with me on some of this, because I don't know dispatch's budget, so I'm trying to learn it a little bit as we go too, so.
Is that 3,200 or 32,000?
3,200.
3,200. Plus we got involved there. What's the cost for the telephones?
I don't have that because all the telephones are paid for by admin. There's a zero in this budget.
Is that through the 911? Yes?
911 fund will pay for two admin lines. Is that right, Mary? Yeah.
The guesstimate on any cost for data lines or telephone lines? A year?
That was two. For the back, 12,000.
So the county's not paying for them. All right, so mark them all. Is our maintenance gonna go up whenever we double the equipment after it's moved?
That's what we're getting to.
Kind of trying to get, yeah, we're getting to some of that as I go along down through some of these things.
Right now, we're looking at, the county's paying roughly a half million dollars for dispatch. Whenever we add all of the personnel.
That's where a lot of my numbers are at, thereabouts, kind of, you know. I didn't get them necessarily dialed right in, so. So moving forward, we met as another, a smaller group last week, myself, Mary, Nick and Chris, couldn't be with us today. But, and we tried to get a feel for what additional things are we going to need that we currently don't have when we move it down here? And the answer we came up with is really not a whole lot, because most of the equipment that's sitting over there in the dispatch center where it's at now, we'll just pick it up and bring it over here and it'll be just fine. The one thing we do need are new workstations for the dispatchers. And by workstation, I mean a desk with, you know, the thing to put their monitors on and all that stuff. So we've been working through the weeds on some of that stuff a little bit and they're expensive, not as expensive maybe as we thought. I think initial estimates for those were like $100,000 for a pair. Myself and Mary, and mostly Mary, but has been working with a vendor and we think it'd be less than half that. And then we also aren't sure how much of that the 911 board will pay for. And actually, I think when Mary said she emailed the 911 board, they're not sure how much they'll pay for. It's one of those send us a quote and we'll let you know what we'll do sort of things. Hopefully, you know, they would cover the majority of that, especially since they-
Get that and write it.
I love that answer. We'll let you know. New chairs for them guys, they're, you know, they're roughly a couple thousand dollars apiece. They're paid for by 911 money. Up to a certain amount, but I think the 911 board will pay 1,800 bucks a chair. Surely to goodness, we can get them a couple. And they're not just a normal old office chair. I mean, they're sitting in those things 12 hours a day. They're nice chairs. The only, let me see, I'm trying to, the additional console for the second seat has been purchased. That is already paid for. It's sitting in Winston-Salem, waiting on the vendor to have a place to put it. So there's no cost involved with that, well, there was, but it's paid for and it's done. So the only other cost that we really don't know at this point is what will it take those vendors that have equipment? What's it gonna cost for them to come, pick up their piece of equipment, bring it over here and reconnect it? Some of them, the cost is none. I think there's a data logger over there. Part of the service contract is they gotta come move it if we want it moved. I don't know all of our contracts with all the people that we have. And there's one, the big one is the EZNet, which is what, you know, basically drives the 911 network. It's way technical stuff. It's out of my realm, but we're trying to get a feel for whatever cost that might be. And our rep that services this area, I think, just got back from vacation, so we haven't gotten a clear answer on that yet.
What about security cameras?
We're getting there too. So anyway, as far as what it's gonna take to actually pick it up and move it, unfortunately, the answer is right now, we don't know. Not entirely. We have a handle on it, but there's a few pieces of information we're still waiting to get there. And I'm gonna summarize some of this as we move forward a little further. So that brings us to the grant. If you remember, we got a grant of $135,000 to pay for a tower right out here and to pay for the construction renovation to that space. When I, when we first sat down as a committee and started doing our estimates, what we thought it would take to renovate that space, we actually came up with about $25,000. Well, when I applied to the state, I inflated it and put another 10 on it. Just, why not? So to give ourselves a cushion. Well, the first estimate came in actually at 45, which puts us into the realm of now we can't just hire someone, we've gotta do an RFP and solicit bids and quotes and all that stuff. So I'm working through writing an RFP right now. Now, the tower, also trying to get the, we knew we was gonna have to do an RFP for that as a $100,000 project. So we're getting that developed and hopefully have it out here real soon. And, you know, would like to get those things awarded as soon as we can so we can get construction done.
Say one thing. Back on what you, instead of, I think the proper term was we planned accordingly for inflation. Instead of using the identification of inflating the number, we planned accordingly for inflation purposes.
Called it a contingency, actually, when I officially did it, because we do everything with a contingency. I'm trying to make light of the situation.
Who's the spokesperson?
You're laughing? Okay. So in summary, what, you know, what else is it gonna take? So I have the number, the workstations that remains to be seen. At the very most, if we had to pay every penny of that out of pocket from the quotes that Mary sent me today, 40,000 at the most for the works, for the two workstations. Their Cadillac version of the workstation, $40,000. And hopefully, like I say, 911 pays for most of it. That remains to be seen. These are the six items I've identified the county may have to pay for. That one, whatever shortfall there could be if, for some reason, the tower and construction project costs more than 135,000. If there's, if there's a difference. The generator. If you remember, I had applied for a generator grant sometime back, that got denied. And when I appealed it, they told me I was still wrong, that it was denied. So we'll have to buy a generator. 911 money, we'll pay for a portion of that generator. Whatever portion it is that actually we can determine runs the 911 center. And myself and Mr. Carter had a discussion about having an engineer actually make that determination for us. And we're gonna try to get the fellow that does the 90 South Main work to come down here and take a look at that for us, so that we can identify that it's, say it's 20% of the building, if we want to power the whole building. Now, if we wanted to just power dispatch, 911 wanna pay for it, but I think that's being a little short-sighted. I think we are to power the whole building. But we'll get to that point when we get there. The fourth cost I have is the cost to pick up and move the EZNet and whatever other equipment. The fifth cost, and I don't know how much of this is planned for, Rita's already gone, but is the cost of the actual disposal and shredding of the documents that's down there that needs to be gotten rid of. Has that money, has that been allocated somewhere? I mean, I don't know what.
Ready?
Yeah. I mean, it's a cost to move, so I included it.
To include it in the renovation for this.
Then the sixth item I have was the cost of the cages that we're gonna be installing in the basement of the BDC to, for folks to have a secure place to store their things from here forward. And David, you know the cost of those? A piece? All? So there's a $1,200 cost there, yeah.
You're gonna need any dehydrators in there? Is the?
You mentioned security cameras. Part of the project we wanted to do, and we didn't, I don't know if we just didn't think about it to begin with, was a couple of additional security cameras and the ability for dispatchers to be able to actually open those doors with magnetic locks from their seats.
What I have priced for that part is that we'll have monitors. Cameras will be out in the hall. There'll be monitors there at the workstations for each dispatcher. They will have the ability to open that door from their seat. It will also have a reader on it so that if Nick comes to dispatch, then he's authorized to be in there. He takes his card or his key fob and he's allowed to go in the door then. And it records who comes in and the time and how long we stay and all that stuff. So that's all part of that. So that's gonna be $4,970.2.
Got a question after talking about the security cameras. What quality are they? How long is that record kept for? 10 days, 15 days?
That record is put on the computer and then downloaded to a backup system, whether it's a thumb drive or a cloud. But it's located in a backup system, so it's kept for as long as you want it to be or you delete. And as far as the quality of those cameras, I've had some of those cameras installed in other places and you can read license plates in the parking lot, so they are pretty good quality.
Well, I would hope they would be better than the ones that are down at the Veterans Park. Those cameras are an embarrassment.
Well, they're really a good quality camera.
Thank you.
I think the difference in the quality translates to the distance in between what you're looking at and what you're receiving it also. And just to mention, the cameras at Vet Park are, they're not zoomable. They're a fixed position camera, so that's why the quality isn't as great. But in this instance, you know, you may be looking from here to that wall or in that distance, the quality should be way better.
I'll finish with what I had, so I'd be more than happy to answer whatever questions you've got. Or I will try, and if I don't know the answer, then I'll get one of these guys that threw me under the bus to come up here and answer it.
Gonna be restrooms in there?
Yes, sir. That's part of the, if you recall, that was also the holding cells and stuff at one time. Yep, so the plumbing facilities are still there, yes, and he's right, there'll be one toilet and one lavatory for them to use, and it'll be exclusively used just by the dispatchers.
Another question, anything, are we able to utilize anything where the current backup system is, any of that equipment?
I think our intention right now is to leave that in place, so we'll always have a backup there.
We're required to have a backup PSAP.
Thanks, guys.
You're welcome.
Want to say again?
No, I think Mary said that we'd have to also purchase two computers?
Yeah, they have to have, each dispatcher will have to have a DCI computer.
A computer to run DCI. And we found out just a couple of days ago that that is not an allowable 911 expense.
So it sounds like you really have a lot of work in progress, but you're still actually trying to get information.
Still gathering a lot of pieces and because historically, you know, 911 has been sort of scattered amongst departments. And, you know, we're trying to get all those pieces and put them all together, you know, and get them all-
With effort, everybody's really working together and hopefully- Whatever you need from us, I mean, it's dollars. We don't know what until you really reach the end of your-
And that's what we're working towards, yes, sir.
Due diligence and, okay, thank you.
And for over, whenever he comes out from under the sheriff's department and comes over here where comes the county agency, one thing that I'm looking at is total cost for the county and what reimbursement we're getting from the town.
I would ask April, if you would, we had a budgeted revenue of 50,000, correct? That was anticipated and requested to the town. Don't know over the holidays if we have received that yet.
50,000 would be approximately 10% or 12% of the overall budget. And if we go by population, they had, the town has about 10% of the population of the county, which I'm equating that would be an appropriate amount that they should be funding up. You're the budget master. I'm looking at you and that is a question.
Well, doing the math on the population, but under the current situation, I wouldn't debate that, but with this additional cost that we're identifying, that 10% number changes personally. As we continue forward with gathering this information and putting it more into a understandable expenditure, I think that provides us the opportunity to then calculate what that percent should be. For the current configuration, it's probably applicable. I can't say that in the future because the dollars increase. We will get to that.
What you're saying is sometime in the future, you'll look at the cost of providing dispatch and we will cuss and discuss the need that we receive from the county's part.
Cuss and discuss the amount you're going to request. Now, whether or not to provide those funds or a portion of those funds, it doesn't rest within this room.
I believe it would rest in this room because we can say that they can put up their own dispatch.
That would, that would be in the cuss and discuss portion. Regardless of what that dollar amount is that it comes to, and that is the request sent to the town for either reimbursement or participation or partnerships, however you want to define it, ultimately, they still make the determination themselves on what they provide.
I understand.
What I think we ought to clarify, there was a comment made about the secondary PSAP. I may be off-base, but the choice, I think, is to keep the secondary operational. But with the EZNet, I think there is an alternative to that if that is a desire. So maybe a quick understanding for the board of how that process would work also.
I agree with that. And I think when EZNet came about, it's some digital cloud-based sort of network so that if your comm center goes down, where historically, we would have had to have a brick and mortar physical place for the dispatchers to go. Now, we don't. You call down to Raleigh, they flip a switch and suddenly your 911 calls go to Surry County or to Currituck County, or wherever you want to send them to, you can send them there, which eliminated the need for an actual physical second dispatch. And if I'm not mistaken, and Mary, you may have to help me with this, but I don't think you're required to actually have a physical second location now, are you?
I don't know. I'd have to check.
No, there was a big push for that year, you know, when we did that. It was a huge whoop-de-doo about getting it done by, the state really forced it on us and now it's kind of mundane point.
The only problem with that is how do you, how do you set off the tones whenever you're paging out volunteer fire departments, rescue squads? Are they going to have that capability? to have that capability at the remote site? Now, it's my understanding that they are taking over the communications, but that's, that's all. If they are not able to set off the tones for the pagers, we're going to have to have somebody local. And that would dictate a secondary PSAP.
And that's where, if, down, automatically, oh, Raleigh. And it automatically transfers to Ash County. So then Ash County calls and back up. Are they actually, would this, would have to call? And then we would have to handheld radios, whatever, get tones out, holler, whatever. But in terms of actually having to call to have our calls transferred, you don't have to do that no more.
That would give them, that would give them access to our radio system, the paging system, all the other systems that we've got. But there's no guarantee that Ash County is going to have that, to pick up that call. If we have a national emergency or a weather emergency, Ash is going to be affected also. So if that call is transferred to Hatteras, which is a definite possibility, or New Hanover County, we've lost radio communication. They'll, they'll get to 911 calls, but how are they going to communicate with our first responders up here? That's a question we're going to have to ask.
And I don't know the nuts and bolts of how that works either.
In theory of that, though.
Not going to put a console in all 100, 99 counties.
No.
No, but in, in theory of that, though, if, if the phone line, that part of it, generator should, that would, radios itself is, is actually.
Granted, granted, but someone has got to make the broadcast. That means they've got to have access to the radio system. How are they going to have access to the radio We have a fire in the building. Primary PSAP's down there. Building is finished. How are we going to dispatch? Who's, who, where's the ESINet going to call to tell you that you've got a shooting at the Fifth and Third Bank? How are you going to get that out on the telephone system?
Okay, well, backup center, it's mirrored.
That's what I'm.
Primary dispatch.
That's, that's what I'm getting at.
If the sheriff's office burns to the ground, dispatchers pick up, go straight up to the EMS building, and they will not.
Right. So ESINet's got a place for them to go. So it's dictating that we've got to have a back, backup PSAP. Nothing else to have a access point for ESINet.
Understand David right. We automatically got the, the phone systems under control with our generators. We're able to conduct business as usual.
Yes, sir.
No matter what.
Yes, sir.
Phone lines or whatever.
Yes, sir.
It doesn't matter. If the other county way down the line has the ability to set our tones off.
As long as they have the ability to call.
They have the ability to do the telephone, the 911s.
If the, the point, primary PSAP goes down, ESINet picks up. Well, if your primary PSAP is down, who are they going to call? You got to have a secondary, you got to have We're going to have equipment requirements on that, maintenance requirements on that, which means a maintenance contract, that, all that's got to be maintained.
It's already built into that budget. So, because we already have it. It's in place and functional.
For another county to be able to set our tones, they got to have our console, which you're actually going to have to extra.
Yeah.
Could be with West County.
We had considered, and I think Nick had worked on some of that with the sheriff's office over there, an agreement to take an ex, an extra console and put it in Ash County. And then add one microwave link between here and there. So an actual Allegheny County dispatcher could get in the car and drive to West Jefferson, sit down with that console and dispatch Allegheny County from Jefferson. It's been a consideration.
The weakness in that, your Achilles heel is, the computer will make a determination where the, where that secondary PSAP's going to be through the ESINet. We won't have control over that.
I don't know. I mean, it's a consideration. We didn't say we're going to do it.
Those are questions, those are questions that have got to be asked and we've got to have an answer for. Yeah. Spent 26 years in communications in the Marine Corps. That is the worst thing you can say. Because you'd say it will not happen, and it will happen. To do it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Come back when we got more.
Thank you. Very thorough.
One thing before you get back to you. See, any, any updates that we can provide tower-wise?
As far as the towers going out here, working on the RFP still for that. Waiting on, I have a contact, actually, I reached out to Mobile Communications to ask for them, because I don't have the technical expertise of what kind of tower needs to actually be sitting there. And so I reached out to them to, to seek some guidance on, hey, send me some specifications on what kind of tower we need. Does it need to be, we know it's 60 feet tall. That's all I know about it. You know, what is, how does that construction need to be? I'm waiting on him to send me that back.
Does it have to be 60?
They have to have vertical separation between the antennas to get the clarity for the different networks.
Yeah, yeah.
That was what they talked.
Eliminate co-channel interference and harmonics. Yeah, yeah. Whenever you do the RFP, make sure that you put in, talk to me, testing in strikes, got to be in there.
And I'm sure it will be. And I'm, I mean, I guess, you know, on a project like this, I think whoever's going to do the work should be submitting engineered drawings.
Polyphasers and grounding straps at certain lengths and things of that nature.
As a, as a conclusion, and, and the team doesn't know this yet, so this is too much their surprise as, as anyone else's. But I think once a month moving forward, we provide updates to the board because we are in this process. We are making strides. We are trying to get this thing moving forward. So I think your A meeting or your second meeting of each month, I think we provide updates at each of those moving forward on the progress.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations for what?
I will do.
Seems like you're the spokesmodel.
So well that you're down the front of the chair.
I get ball and toe for a lot of stuff.
Control that inflation if you can.
With friends like these, it was.
He, he turned out to be a pretty good spokesman.
Anybody got anything else? I hear a motion to adjourn.
No.
Second.
Yeah.
Got a motion, say it long term. 6 o'clock, we return.